Andy, I mean.
Okay, uh, six, six oh three. Call to order, the Harbor Commission's special meeting, April fifth. Randy, do you want to do a roll call? That seems to be traditional.
Andy Craig.
Here.
Max Wees.
Here.
Here.
Mike Babix.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is approved. New business. A South Harbor project update. Presentation will be provided. Is there a presentation?
Yes, presentation. We have Mark Keller here, Robin Wright from Solstice AK, and then Curtis Fitcher's here, and Sam was here. Okay.
Welcome, you guys.
You've all met Mark before.
We've all met Mark and Robin this is our first time for the Harbor Commission?
She's doing all the permitting for environmental and all that, all the fun stuff.
The sea otter, uh, train sites that we're gonna place in the back in the harbor.
I guess. You tell me.
Okay, great, Sam. Take it away. Something happened to the aerial.
Okay, so this hasn't changed substantially since the last public meeting we had about the harbor rebuild. The one number on there that's new is that we received official approval from NOAA to divert Kingsham and disaster funds. Six hundred seventy thousand dollars that was going towards the three-stage dock improvements and making permanent the Greater Lake Siphon. We are now putting that towards the South Harbor project, given the funding shortfall. Our rationale there was that those projects don't really require significant workforce mobilization. So we should get as big a bite taken out of South Harbor rebuild as we can. And those were already funds. That was really good news when we heard from NOAA that they signed off on that. Says there we thirty-two point six seven million right now. Uh, the total project, as you know, is about forty-two point four million, which is a significant gap. Uh, in terms of additional funding, we, Helen and I went down to Juneau for about three days, met with most members of the Senate Finance Committee, pleaded our case, and overall it was really positive reception. We left feeling pretty good about it. We put in that seven and a half million. Get us roughly to where we need to be. We are tentatively in the capital budget that is in the Senate right now for that amount. All of you received an email today from Tony, I believe, with some ways to call in or write in about the importance of completing this project in its entirety for our community. Um, considering that you're all on this commission, I would strongly encourage slash beg each of you to please do that and also pass along to other community members, especially fishermen, um, that they should be doing that as well. It's, uh, really important for, for pushing us through that process. We'll go to the House if we make it through the Senate. Um, and we might need to do that again, and then we'll, we'll be before the governor's red pen. We've been in touch with his office as well, but all looking good, but we need to keep our, our foot to the pedal here and, and keep the community pushing forward and advocating for the project to potentially get seven and a half. That number might be reduced. I suspect we will get something in terms of estate allocation. The Nollie Commission has sixteen million dollars in transportation funds, only one million of which is in their work plan for the year, fifteen millions, a federal pass-through, which they haven't released the NOFO for. I can't say too much about that otherwise. Uh, but that's another avenue that we can try to fully fund the project. In terms of, uh, cuts, we can move uplands or some portion of uplands to a phase two of the project. We're really trying to keep a bulkhead of some sort in this project and find the funding for that, trying to fit other project components. And then you guys made our lives easy when you didn't like L float because L float cost a couple million bucks. So that, uh, was a nice synergy there for saving costs. Go to the next slide, Sam. We've, next one for me? Yeah. So.
It's too slow.
There's, we'd also like to take a moment to identify why we're spending all this time on conceptuals. When these design build teams will come back with different designs. And we'd like to, to frame it and maybe remind this commission and community members that what we're really trying to do here is identify issues with these various designs. I mean, obviously you've already done a lot of this for years and years. But if, if we can identify where problems are, such as L float congestion or, um, congestion between North and South Harbor and that fairway width, then we can work with, whether it's R and M right now or design build team in the future, we can work with them to really come up with some engineered solutions to that. So this commission doesn't necessarily need to be solving problems so much as identifying them right now. And I would like to just remind all of you of that for the evening as we talk about these conceptuals that are before you.
Ready, Mark?
Well, close to it. Uh, we've, we've done a series of concepts and they are all only concepts. They are not design plans. They're sort of laying out. We're laying out what the harbor wants to look like i- in the future and trying to make sure that we're trying to address the issues that we know of, which has to do with the clearance between the South Harbor and the North Harbor. Uh, just in order to be able to get both transient boats tied up against the G float and make sure we don't touch anything in the North Harbor area, trying to figure out how we position the service float. Uh, we've looked at multiple orientations on the service float and multiple locations for that. Part of what we did, uh, based on conversations we had was put a little dog leg in the G and the H and the I floats. We think that, that serves a, a very useful purpose in terms of maintaining a width of the fairway and doesn't constrict, uh, the access. We do have some, I'll just say odd-looking, uh, slips there. And I think we'll adjust those out as we go through and just in terms of the, the width of the mouth of a particular slip, uh, we'll adjust those in design. And we'll be able to come back and, and have a lot more symmetrical, uh, sort of appearance to that. And, and, you know, we touched on the fact that, uh, you know, we've looked at L float. We were talking about L float again today. L float involves dredging along the breakwater. Um, and, um, it really is a very expensive float to build and it constricts our ability to do the geometry the way we would like on the other floats. Uh, so we've, uh, we've worked through that. Uh, you can see just the concept here on the Site Plan Six, uh, where we've got the service float kind of skewed at an angle. We think that provides the best access to the two long sides of that service float as well as that short side sort of pointing north and east. Positions the cranes on that and also the sewage pump out station on that. We're, we're looking at how we maneuver, uh, vehicles, um, both box trucks as well as pickup trucks on that. We think there's enough room to be able to do a drive down, get out where you want to load your nets and food and whatever it is you're putting on the vessels. And then be able to make a probably some sort of a K turn, uh, and, uh, drive back up that, uh, that ramp. We will clearly have, uh, barriers there so that you won't be able to drive off the edge of that service float. Yet to be designed, but, uh, you know, we're going to try to save as much space, clear space and square footage on that service float as we can. I will say that one of the areas where we talked about bringing the project cost down is to sort of figure out what the minimum size of a service float might be that would accomplish the goals that we have. We're, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about four hundred and sixty dollars a square foot for that service float. So if we could take some square footage out of it and not, uh, impinge on the use and utility of it, uh, we may have to do that in order to match the scope of the project to the budget that's available to us as soon as we figure out exactly what our budget amount is going to be. I mentioned the, the dog legs. The other thing you will notice, and I think we heard this last time, were, were the, uh, the Ts at the end of the HIJ and K floats. Um, we can do transient vessels up there. We can moor to both the, the north and the south side of those. And that gives us a few more, uh, boat slips that count. When this was originally submitted to MARAD for the raise, uh, we indicated we would want to be able to build four hundred and seventy slips. That included the L float. If we take the L float out, our count on slips now is what, four hundred and forty-three or something like that, Tony?
I think that's what we came up with today.
Yeah, that's what we looked at today. Uh, we're gonna look real hard and see if there isn't a way to add some additional, uh, slip spaces there to get closer, uh, if you will, to the volume we submitted to, uh, to, um, the MARAD folk. And you'll notice this and then the next slide, Sam, if you have. Pardon?
The net mending.
Oh, the net mending float, yeah.
See, that's on, uh, alpha J on the very end near the breakwater.
Yeah. There are a lot of little nuances here. Basically what these concepts are trying to do for us is to define what the project wants to look like and what our performance standards are for, uh, the design builders to work around it. The concepts and then some minimum performance standards, which will be in an appendix through the RFP we'll send out to the various, uh, design build teams, uh, will include this kind of information. There we go. And you see just a different location for the service float and for the net mending float. This has a little more constriction, uh, associated with it between, uh, G and the North Harbor area. And question is whether that's really tolerable to us and how we're going to be able to make sure that we are able to bring in the transients, park them out on the outside of, of G and, and still maintain access. This is a concept too that shows the slips being perpendicular, um, to the, uh, the main walk versus the, uh, angled slips on the other. I don't know that there's a right or a wrong answer or what the angle ought to be. That's something we'll work with the designer once we pick the design build team to kind of figure out what it is we want to accomplish there. And, and could I sort of invite questions about these two concepts now and, or the concepts we've looked at?
The boat, also just so you guys know, the boats that are shown on the G float, those are to scale with a width of a thirty-foot wide boat. Just to give a little.
A thirty-foot wide boat?
Yeah, thinking like the Majestic or someone that sits over there that's, has those tenders.
To give a little, uh.
We just wanted to look at that geometry with some boats scaled in there.
So I guess. Um, I've got a question, I guess. Um, we're tight on budget.
No, we're short on budget.
I don't understand how cocking the, so not on this particular one, but on the alternative six, how cocking the drive down and making that trestle, the, the drive down transfer bridge longer. That's gonna make that cost way more than in our other drawings that we've had. And then adding an entire gangway for pedestrian traffic is gonna add cost. Well, I mean, I remember when we were first looking at this, each gangway was like seven hundred thousand bucks. So I guess I don't understand how this is better than what we've been talking about in the past where they would share a gangway with just a pedestrian barrier.
That would require a barrier to keep people and vehicles from being in contact with each other. But we also thought if we separated both the walk down and the drive down, that would be the, the safest possible combination we could give you.
And you can make the, you don't have to include the walkway in the drive down dock, which is added square footage into a very heavy duty.
Right. Yeah, because that's what John Daly said.
Right. But we could, we could have different gangways, like an aluminum pedestrian gangway next to a steel drive down gangway off the same trestle without having to build another trestle, which is, that's pretty expensive to build a trestle, I guess.
I think the trestle would be sort of pile-supported kind of, kind of two, probably twenty-four inch pile at the end of the trestle and then to an abutment on the shore side.
The way John Daly explained it, that it would be, it would cost more to include it into the drive down ramp and add it on to that than just do a separate one.
Really?
Yeah. And with this one, with this idea, you move that trestle over so you don't have, if you come down onto the G float right over in that area, you got all that walk over there and we know everyone will not like that.
The additional walk to say H float?
Yeah. Or I, yeah.
Or I.
Yeah.
Then the rotating of the drive down, the rationale there was, given how expensive it is, just maximizing the total square footage that you can use along the edges was worthwhile?
And that's really the purpose of it is be able to get vessels up there on, on the edges of that rather than taking up the touchdown area for the drive down ramp.
Yeah, so we'd get to use three sides of it instead of two if it was up against like G float like it was originally or part of it.
The, the short side was against G.
Yeah, the long ways, you still had.
We still had three sides.
There was still three sides on the other drawing. You'd come in where the Lady Samantha's parked and pull up against it.
Well, yeah, you could over there, but I mean, just on this side and then they didn't like the gangway was on the edge of it. John Daly, I think, mentioned that it's better to have the landing in the middle of the float than off to the side.
That's just the weight distribution on the service.
So I'm trying to think of the other draw, but I know what you're talking about.
And then this way you kind of waste a few stalls. There seems like that whole corner of the harbor is kind of wasted right there in a weird way.
I feel like both of these, I mean, no offense, I feel like they both kind of miss the boat about what we've been talking about for years. Which is the design drawings that we've already talked about over and over again. Which is the PND alternative four with just teeing off the floats and deleting L. I do like having the straight floats. I like that concept. I think that we need to evaluate having the float straight across from each other though, because that's not shown here. And I think that that could create a cost savings and having the bolts that run through the dock to tie them together. But that's nitty-gritty design stuff, but it just, it might be something to consider.
You're saying stagger them?
No, these are staggered.
Yeah, okay.
Slightly. I think having them straight across from each other might provide some cost savings, maybe.
I think it becomes a, as we run into on the harbor, it runs into a nightmare because you have to disconnect two floats to repair one.
Okay, so you want them staggered.
I think you're better off at least having a partway off because when one breaks, it breaks the bolts for the other one if they're directly across.
Okay.
The staggered ones, you might break two of those bolts because they kind of two will might line up, but you still have four holding that other.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and a maintenance idea, I think that's the best way is to have them staggered a little bit.
I really don't like the alternative five of having the service float uh, in the middle of the float complex that I think is gonna actually create more congestion than how we had it in the PND alternative four D. I also don't like how it would prohibit us from doing the phase two PIDP that we're talking about. I think that's, that's a really important piece of this whole project and I understand that we're not going to be able to afford to do the uplands work now, but I don't want to totally give up on that for the future by blocking ourselves from doing it down the road.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to eliminate the uplands work. We're trying to say it needs to be deferred to another phase when we can find additional funding.
Which is fine.
You can design as a criteria that we would put with the RFP, you would say, design the drive down dock to be incorporated into an uplands in the future.
Yeah.
So you think, how, can you explain the congestion? What, what do you, just why, why? Because there's slips on both sides of that? Or what is it, the congestion that you're concerned about? Slips on both sides?
Just not enough room to really spin very big boats all around and stuff.
You don't have a turning basin anywhere there. You'd have to back all the way out.
If you have three boats tied around that loading dock, is anybody gonna be able to get into the backside of those other floats?
No. If I tie up between G, if I tie up to the, let's say the, um, the grid side of that service float as shown in alternative five, I'm twenty-foot wide or whatever. There's no way somebody's gonna be able to get by me or, or if you get a thirty-foot wide tender in there.
You wouldn't even ever get a thirty-foot wide tender in it. If there's a boat in this stall here, you just wouldn't get a boat that was very big in there.
If you have a twenty-foot wide center hipped up to G and, or H, sorry, and then you have a boat getting serviced. I mean, it's just too tight. You won't be able to fit through there. I don't see how, and then in alternative six, I don't see how putting a dog leg in the dock and cocking the service float sideways like that. I don't see how that provides any congestion alleviation. If anything, I can see it creating more congestion because you're getting it closer to the three-stage out in the middle where people are loading nets.
You mean the dog leg on the bottom?
Yeah. And I, and then you're gonna create congestion with the boats trying to get into their stalls. You know, on the, the end of N float there, you're gonna have a really tough time getting in there. Somebody's getting worked on. So I really would prefer to see us keep it straight and then have G float attached to the drive down. And we just, you know, like in how they have it in Sitka, the drive down is part of the float structure.
And.
You mean you drive to the drive down and then you walk off the drive down and go onto the G float?
That was like our last plan.
So it's not its own separate float. It literally attaches to the drive down.
And you wouldn't necessarily have to drive down the drive down if there was, obviously the pedestrian walkway incorporated into the drive down. In Valdez, they just have like, it's like three feet of the drive down float is concrete so you could walk down and you're not on those big iron.
Yeah, it's just a sidewalk. It's just like any road has.
But, um, then you could connect right on to G. So you could go down G without driving down. You could just walk down the, the ramp. I understand it's additional feature on the ramp, but it's hard to believe it would be more expensive than a whole new trestle and ramp. Just having a few feet for pedestrian traffic. There's nothing separating the trucks from the people in the Valdez scenario, but I don't.
But Valdez is all by itself.
It is. It isn't part of the, the, like Sitka, it's not part of the the float structure, but, um, I, I just don't see traffic being quick enough for that to be a real problem of people.
No, but we did, we did talk about wanting to, uh, put a cover over the, uh, gangways. And if we put a cover, then we got to have supports. And so in addition to a, a bulk rail, we'd have to have some posts and columns come up in order to support a covered structure. You're just trading one for.
Yeah, no, I.
I'm not saying.
I, I would, I would, I would agree that putting a cover on that one would be problematic and it might be just one of those things you put up with is.
Well, the one in Sitka has a cover over just the, just the pedestrian part. I, I can't remember.
Was it on the side?
I can't remember if it's a separate trust or if it's a separate gangway or if it's all in the same, I think it's all in the same. And it's just off to the side and they just have pillars come up as like a guardrail between, it's kind of just like the ferry dock. That's all the same and it has its own little cover.
Hamster trail kind of thing.
Yeah. Um, I guess we're trying to identify problems here. Um.
We'll call them issues, not problems.
Issues. So in addition to, you know, some of the other things we've already talked about. I think that from a first responder perspective, having that ninety-degree dog leg is gonna make it difficult to get cupcake down to respond to a potential, um, response. You know, that's, those ninety-degree turns are really hard for that and it's already gone in the harbor once before.
Where's the ninety degrees? Which ones are you talking about?
Right there, that dog leg around. That's just a potential issue I see is adding ninety-degree turns onto the transient float. Almost all the responses go to the transient float.
Right there, yeah.
That, I think, it's just like, it's a consideration.
Legitimate observation, yeah, for sure.
So I do really like how you guys teed off the floats. Um, I think that one thing that I would like to see is, I know you can't tee off the end of G float, maybe you could L off the end?
I mean, we talked about that. We have to be very careful with that with the core.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, because. Oh. Because the core owns everything under that. That's where they dredge under G float. If we make it longer there or, yeah.
But I mean, yeah, okay. Yeah.
We can, we can invest.
It would just be a way to add two more slips, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was seeing that too, that to have that bit poking out doesn't really get us much.
Yeah.
Or if you just.
And I, I really don't like either of these alternatives. They put G and H closer together and that was something that people have a lot of concern with. I know we talked about the concern with L and that has been solved in these and I appreciate that. K and J are really in great spots. I is in a great spot, but I feel like H needs to be where it is now. Because we're trying to get, I mean, those are sixty-foot slips. We're trying to get the bigger boats in there. It's just, I guess that's an issue I see with these is we need a little bit more maneuvering room. We're already making those fifty-foot slips into sixty-foot slips. So even if we put it in the exact same location it is now, we're gonna be eating away our maneuvering room. Right now in the mud bay or one of those bigger boats goes into their stall, like I've almost been clipped a couple of times in my stall uh, when the wind gets blowing. It's already tight, so.
So we need to look at the geometry between G and H.
Yeah, I would say make sure you put G right where it is right now. Um.
And don't put H any closer to it.
Yeah, G and H need to kind of stay where they're at and we're already gonna be taking some of the room out just by adding sixty-foot slips, which I think is fine, that ten feet, but we can't do that plus move the whole finger over. That's gonna cause some issues.
Okay.
And I, I like the, having the whole thing straight. I don't like having the curves and the ends. I don't know why. It's just crazy or what?
The other way you're gonna do one eighty almost.
Yeah.
I was just looking at pictures of Valdez's drive down. They don't have a walkway on theirs or a cover.
I was just looking at pictures of Valdez's drive down. They don't have a walkway on theirs or a cover unless they just recently installed it.
As far as.
There, there's no cover, that's for sure.
It's just, it's a standard gangway.
As far as drive down size.
Part of its concrete.
By a ninety by ninety if we needed.
No?
Yeah.
That's what Valdez is. I think we could do that.
Sort of, sort of my minimum suggestion was ninety by.
Wasn't hard to walk on.
Yeah, I think this one's ninety by one twenty. The Valdez one is ninety by ninety. I think we can make do if we need to.
Yeah, and at one time we were looking at, I mean, P and D suggested, you know, a one ten by one forty, which.
Yeah.
One, I don't think we can afford, okay, and two, just the space, you know, we can't afford it from a geometry. So we're trying to, trying to do two things here is look at cost as well as space available in the base.
It's just there. That's what starts to worry me.
Go down those two. Just for the amount of room that's going to be down there.
Yeah.
As a ferry.
Um, that could save us a hundred grand right there, so. I think we already discussed that once at a meeting when we were, our must haves, we, we said we could do without one of those cranes.
I think we went down to two cranes.
Yeah, this one says three, but.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
I think we, we've resolved that two cranes is probably going to be workable and that does save some money.
Yeah. My comments that I had were I'd like the, I like the straight floats and with the Ts on the end, I think that that's a good addition and. I just kind of echoed what Kenny was saying about turning the drive down float and stuff. I really liked, you know, we kind of lose some stalls and it, it kind of. Just to me, my impression of it is just kind of funky in that corner right there. I really liked the way that, what was the four D?
Yeah, P and D alternative four D.
Yeah, the alternative four D. I like the orientation on that and how it was tied into uh G float at the same time there. And then we have more floats, you know, on the inside of the beginning of G float there for bigger boats also. Um, and also I like the, I like the idea of having the slight little bit of dog leg in the G and H and possibly I floats. Just so that we can keep a little bit more space from the other harbor out there in the end. Uh, that seems like that makes sense, but we just got to make sure that the uh.
Yeah, we're not designing this here. We're just sort of suggesting the idea of, and somebody will come up with a different angle and they'll be able to tell us what spaces we have.
Yeah, I was just saying I like.
No, I, I, I agree with you. There was one thing John Daly was talking that between H and I is moving some of the, moving the bigger boats over to that. Is that not on the other one? Remember he talked about, because that fairway is so much wider. If we lost space, this one doesn't show it, but.
Oh, it says a hundred nineteen. Fifty and sixty foot slips.
Flip them.
Yeah.
On H.
That might not be a bad idea.
Because you have that gang, that fairway is so much bigger. You could put bigger ones on one side of I.
Or move the float over a couple of years.
But, yeah, whatever work.
Oh, flip them on I float, you mean?
Or flip them on H.
How the space in, in I.
Twenty feet between the stalls here and only a hundred and one over here.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's because they moved it over ten feet or something. I thought they were even right now, but. I don't know. It feels like they're closer almost right now. And I'm pulling around onto the other side of H. Feels closer between H and I than it does between H and G right now.
I think it is.
Uh, I think just, one thing that's important is we're designing this instead of picking on specific things, just in something that. This space right here, I know some of it would go away if we put the drive down float in the other orientation. Look at this turning basin right here is a key component of what we've got going on that's working down there. And when you cack that drive down float over, you really need to, I mean, that. Um, do a lot of backing and filling and you're driving big boats around, pushing things in that space is really important. And uh, there's a lot of traffic that gets into those corners and comes around and delivers at the Trident plant and. Gets back down to the three stage dock and uh, the big landing crafts coming in to unload the asphalt and think of all the traffic that comes in there. That's a real important space and I don't think we want to stick something right out in the middle of it.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's. That's, yeah, I guess that goes with what I was saying is where I think both of these actually create more congestion than they solve.
I think, yeah, we're, we're trading off congestion on the water versus congestion on the uplands. You know, at the intersection there where the boat launch is and that's.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what the balance is. That's a decision.
Vehicles have brakes.
Need to make.
Boats.
Well, we have some interesting pictures.
Some have K turns easier.
Various people's trucks and trailers and boats all in the water.
Vehicles don't move when it blows forty.
Yeah. Anyways, do you want to go off to the, just kind of scan through the other pieces there, Sam? Next piece, yeah. Yeah, this, this would be something we could build if we can come up with a forty million dollars and it shows a bulkhead. Uh, there uh, and provides transient float and has the benefit of additional parking. I, I will say that that's an expensive parking lot uh, when you take all of that cost.
On that drawing, if, without that bulkhead, that's a better drawing for that area though, that we're worried about getting congested.
Yeah, that's just uh, instead of being scanned skewed, but then you have the, everybody's trying to make that right hand turn. Coming to the long side of that.
Yep.
Where?
The service dock.
Service dock, yeah.
Well, the service dock is, that's not slathered, that's straight out now.
Oh, you just go through the EC parking lot and go straight on.
Mach ninety.
Well, that's kind of more where the drive down is in the P and D.
Right.
Yeah.
Instead of that dog leg corner there, it's just straight.
Right.
I'm not sure in the P and D how it was really connected or not, but.
I thought it was.
I think it was connected right in the center of the dock.
Yeah, but it, yeah, this is more like it, but.
Yeah, similar.
Yeah.
This, this side is. Out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go nutters, but you can't really get a big boat in there.
Has the long end of the service dock connected to G float?
I've.
It's the long.
Short end.
Short end.
Short end?
It's just like this, but connected.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, that would be.
It just connects right here.
But wasn't the drive down Kenny oriented to the long, the short end was connected and the long end went out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you were able to use more of the, the long, the long ends.
You were you, you able to use the short side and the two long sides and then the, the other short side was part of G, basically.
Yeah, but you could still pull around and use that too.
That could be the, that was the loading zone, I think.
That's for like direct market sales or.
Yeah, there was no slip there. That was a loading.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, what we're showing there with the bulkhead in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It is really just meant to be schematic because the size of that bulkhead uh is going to be determined by the available funds. It's like. The third priority for allocation of, of project cost.
So the one thing this bulkhead, and I know you probably already know this, but the one thing that's missing is just. That one of the key components of the whole plan with the bulkhead work was to get that additional transient float at the bottom of it.
Right.
So I can't, I don't think that's in this one.
That, that, that's just blue blob there.
Yeah.
This is no detail. This is, this, if we had forty million bucks.
The transient float would be.
Would be incorporated into that.
It would be at the base of this.
Yeah. So this one, moving that gangway away from where the drive down is, takes away a ton of potential transient space in the future. I guess for that reason, I really am not a fan of it. I mean, Tony's claiming people, yeah, people are going to complain about the walk, well.
Can you say that again?
Well, moving that trestle to where you.
A little one?
Yeah, you come down onto H float instead of coming down onto G float.
Yes.
You take away. That's probably why it's only forty and not fifty million, because you take away so much of the potential benefit from. Being able to go uplands all the way to the drive down.
If we, yeah, if we had enough money, I mean, it's all going to be based on money and how much.
Right, but if we're, if we're trying to design a project that we can do into phases, this blocks part of phase two in my opinion, and so we want to keep it where it doesn't. I mean, I understand we don't have the money for it right now, but let's design it in a way where we're not blocking ourselves from the full benefit in the future.
Because they can't.
You don't see people with boats on I float being upset about how far they need to walk?
Oh, they totally will. I just don't.
And, and it would.
Somebody loses, somebody wins, yeah.
It would block because they couldn't go under the trestle, what? I'm just trying to understand what.
If this wasn't here, this could go over and then this transient float would go the whole way.
Yeah, it just blocks a quarter of the potential transient float and a quarter of the uplands.
Nothing that said we couldn't fill on that side too, if we had the.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could act, well, except you have the drive down ramp there. And so I think it'd be really a difficult access. It'd be sort of your last choice of where you'd want to put your transient.
Yeah. I do like the net mending float. I think it's too small.
What size would you like a net mini float to be?
Don't ask.
That size.
I think it should go where the.
A hundred.
Size is that?
That's a hundred.
Well, I personally think that we should just make a steel frame, put it underneath this one, take it over to the haul out, pick it up, replace the wood, put it back in. Put it where the forest service dock is. Then we get the airplane float and we still have a net mending float and we don't buy a whole new float. We just rebuild our existing float in-house for a hundred grand.
I think that's an optimistic hundred grand, but that's okay.
I think I can do it for that.
Hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty by what?
I think it's like forty five. Which would be too much for us to haul out. Too wide.
How wide is it?
I think it's like forty five.
Oh, is it?
I think, I mean, I'd have to check.
I might have to put it on a trailer then.
It's a big trailer.
I, I'm curious, the um. J and K are currently uh, straight floats from their main dock.
Perpendicular, yeah.
Perpendicular, thank you. And um, H, I and G are um, canted, if you will, and uh. And then in these two, we have all one way or all the other way. And I was just curious, is there a reason? I kind of, anyways, I'm, I'm kind of curious because. It does seem like the, one of the reasons of the law, the slanting is that kind of like slanting parking lots is that you get. A little bit more boat in there without sticking out so far. Where in J and K, we don't really have that problem. They're more maneuverable, small boats and we stack them in a little tighter, so um. And maybe that we're all just stuck with what we're used to. You're probably hearing a little bit of that, but I kind of like J and K being straight. And H, G and I being canted, being.
There's no reason that couldn't be done. Because you kind, you kind of lose on the cant though. Because one side you get the, the extra few feet, the other side you actually.
Yeah, but we have longer boats, shorter boats. And so the shorter boat can take the inside and the longer boat can take the, 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 the long end of the. You do, you're right, you do lose, but.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm with Andy. I actually prefer it, but I've heard a lot of complaints the other way, like Tony's saying, so I, I don't really care, I guess, but. I personally am on the benefiting side of the cant with my boat and I like that.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I get it.
Um. But I do know that like my stallmate just moved stalls because he hated being on the inside. Made it hard for him to get in. So.
Yeah.
Makes, yeah, I do, but if, if we're squeezing the boats, if we're squeezing the floats, the main floats. Together as close as we can, having the boats at angles cuts down that. Amount of space each boat takes. And like you're saying that, um, especially G and H where the bigger boats are, the distance between there is um. Is really close to workable as it is, so I don't think we want to. If we make them straight, that's going to cut it down. Um, the boats are going to stick out further. I don't know that we gain much by having them perpendicular.
A lot easier to maneuver into the straight ones, I think.
Is it?
I don't know if I agree.
Depends on which side you're on.
Maybe personal preference on that.
Maybe.
I, I have really easy time getting in my stall, but.
Well, if, if you're in the one that's in the right, you don't got to go around the ends and stuff. Half the stalls are really easy, are easier. Half of them are harder.
Yeah, I know.
Just depends on how much Tony likes you when he signs you up for a stall.
It's got nothing to do with it. We can make the stalls pivot to you.
Yeah.
You push a button, the rest all goes over, you tie up, it goes back the way it was. I like that.
I think that.
Couple million dollars, yeah, option.
Maybe we can look at it.
In.
In the next reiteration of this drawing, maybe both ways.
Part of it's the wind. I mean, we, we really cacked into the wind. The little boats, thinking little boats, J and K. Aren't as affected as much as the strain on the docks. I think that um.
Yeah, I don't know how to figure what the windage strain would be either way.
There are marine engineering firms that would be hired as a sub consultant to the design build firm.
But it comes right on your nose if you're on those slips and you're pointed in the direction.
They'll do that calculation.
I feel like that's why we have them.
I'm pretty sure that's why we have them that way.
And it is nice. It's, when you tie up in the winter, you go stern to the main float, uh, at least on my side.
Come right into the wind.
Your bow's right into the wind and that boat rides really well in its stall for the winter. So.
I mean, we, we will do a, a wind wave analysis, you know, somebody will do a wind wave analysis. Because that will help us determine the size of the pile that we need to maintain stability of the floats.
So you want to look at more pictures?
What's that?
More pictures?
Sure.
Okay, the, these are just some schematic drawings that come from some other projects, but showing you. Uh, in this case, what the roof on the, the gangway section would be and how we would tie them to the various floats. These are not design details. These are just kind of give you an example of, of what we're really looking at and it helps us with the performance specs. Is you can't read it, but you know, there are performance specs in there that, that help us define uh, what we're really looking for. And you want to go to the next one there, Sam? And uh, shows you elevations on the trestle, shows you the gangway range of motions. The kinds of things we'll take into consideration as we're developing and refining the design before we start building anything, but we'll, we'll get all of those details. In place and go to the next one there, Sam. And here is uh, where we have fire hydrants, the water risers, uh, the service, service for the water. Uh, we don't have an electrical drawing into this, but we will develop similar sorts of drawings for uh, the electrical pedestals. Once we figure out what they want to be and kind of how they want to come together. This is meant just to kind of give you an idea where our thinking is going with, with what the harbor ought to look like and what the floats ought to look like as we move forward. Next one. There we are.
Your turn.
So um, I will introduce myself again. I'm Robin Reich. I'm with Solstice Alaska Consulting. We do a lot of permitting for docks and harbors. Our most recent job was in Sitka. For the rebuild of their Crescent Harbor that they did, which is very similar. They did a whole harbor, but very similar to this project. So what I've been um, hired to do is to help you guys with, uh, first of all, figuring out what your permitting needs are and then helping you to acquire those permits. And I just work with, with water and critters, not with things like fire, fire permits or building permits or anything like that. I'm just with the environmental side of things. So the first thing that you guys need and, and you, you guys might know this inside and out because you live on the water, you know all about it. But I'm just going to go through it and you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong about something, but the first thing that you're going to need is an environmental assessment. And that's because um, environmental assessments are required by the National Environmental Policy Act if you get federal funding. Or if you have a federal action associated with your project. Well, you have federal funding through MARAD and you might have additional funding through other ways. If like uh, if some more of these grants come through. And you'll, you'll have um, a federal action, that being a core permit and some other approvals through other federal agencies. So you need this environmental assessment to, to meet the requirements of NEPA. It's a, it's a document that goes through alternatives. It looks at impacts of those alternatives. And it um, ultimately comes to a decision. Um, the decision, the decision does not have to be the least impactful um, of the alternatives. of the alternatives, but it does have to be feasible and rational. And it does have to make attempts to mitigate impacts to the environment. An important approval that will take you likely longer than the MARAD environmental assessment is an Endangered Species Act consultation. And that's essentially, you really have two endangered species that you're dealing with with this project, which would be stellar sea lions and humpback whales, which are outside the harbor. I know you wouldn't expect a humpback within the harbor, but there is a potential for perhaps noise to go outside the harbor. And so we have to look at the impacts of that noise on.
Noise being driving pile.
Driving pile. So this consultation you do with the National Marine Fisheries Service, NIMPs. And it's, again, going through what kind of critters you would expect to see there, how they'd be impacted by the projects or the project, how those impacts would be mitigated. And I've never not gotten through an endangered species consultation because essentially it's, it's a document. It's a process, but it won't keep you from doing your project, especially in this case. Am I allowed to answer questions now or?
So on that, before I lose my train of thought, are blue herons endangered?
No.
Okay. Because we have a bunch of them in the harbor.
Okay. Well, that's cool.
They're all over down there.
They're decorative.
Yeah.
They are actually protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act.
Okay. I knew there was some sort of protective order. I wasn't sure how.
Yeah, but I would expect that they would not be hanging in the harbor when you guys want to do work, I hope.
Our construction period is winter.
Yeah, they're going to be.
The herons are all down, Stahomish and Puget Sound.
When, when are they hanging there?
I mean, I see them in February and March.
We'll put that on the list.
We'll put that on the list.
I mean, I just don't want to see us get shut down because it wasn't thought of.
Yeah, I will look into that.
Okay.
And you guys all know this, but sea otters, while protected by other, another law that I'll get to, are not an endangered species in Prince William Sound. They are in other places like the Aleutians. So also there's this Magnuson Stevens Fisheries Conservation Act that protects essential fish habitat. Pretty much anything near shore is essential fish habitat for some species or another. It's essentially this assessment that we have to go through is again documenting what fish are expected to be in the area. And in your harbor, I know that this not really special, anything special about the harbor. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't probably want to eat a fish caught in any harbor, but maybe your harbor is cleaner than others. But we just, because NIMPs has mapped EFH there, you have to go through this process. It's again, not a tricky process. It's just documenting what's there, the impacts to those fish and their habitat and how those impacts would be mitigated. As I mentioned, sea otters are protected. They're protected by the Marine Mammal Protection Act. And because we have heard that sea otters hang in your harbor, we will have to get a permit to take them by harassment during.
Not fatally.
No, not fatally, but by harassment during construction. This harassment results from construction activities, particularly pounding pile, vibrating pile, socketing pile. All those kinds of activities create a lot of, impacting pile, create a lot of noise. Impacting pile creates a lot of noise above the water that we all hear, but we don't hear what's going on below when they're vibrating. And that's actually a pretty big deal below water. They've done sound, all kinds of sound studies that show that there's a lot of sound. And it has an impact on all kinds of marine critters. And if the critter's too close to that source, you know, ears bleeding, animals dying. But most of the time, what we're most worried about is the harassment that it causes, which means that they leave a spot, that's harassment. They change their activity, that's harassment. So there's a, there's a permit that you can get to be able to take by harassment of sea otters. You get that from Fish and Wildlife Service. There's a whole nother IHA incidental harassment authorization that you need to get from NIMPs for sea otters, harbor seals, and potentially if that sound is outside, happens to travel outside the harbor through some of our activities, killer whales, humpback whales, anything that you might see between here and the island. I don't know that the contractor couldn't just stop making noise when humpbacks or killers are outside the harbor. But if, if we have this IHA that allows us to take the critters while you're doing construction, then they can just keep working along while those animals are there.
But the breakwater should attenuate a fair amount of this sound.
Most of it.
And there'll be a radius.
Right.
And I'm sure in the IHA that we'll get, that will require us to do a shutdown if an animal is within that radius. That's other projects that I've done here have those kinds of requirements.
And that's, that's the tricky part here is if you do have, say, a sea otter or a harbor seal or a sea lion in the harbor, there is a distance that you, that critters aren't allowed, that you're not allowed to keep pounding away on that pile if the critters are within that area. Because you will end up really hurting, really hurting something. And that's the only thing that's going to be tricky here is if, you know, we start moving out boats and taking out floats and if those individuals don't leave, they could hold up the show for a bit. We will try to figure out how to... And you can't harass them to leave, as you guys know. You can't, you know, shoot above their head or something to try to get them to leave. That's illegal. And so we will have to figure out a way around that. I know in Crescent Harbor, where they had, they told me, this is going to be a problem. We always have otters here. Once the contractor started doing work and there was nothing to entice a critter to stay there, they, they left.
Legal harvest.
They, they just left. Or, yeah, and I'm not hearing that.
Well, I think even like in the summer, you notice that pretty much the sea otters leave. As people get in and work gets going on, they start going out, so.
And then what, what about like harbor seals? Do you see them?
I only ever see them in the winter.
More in the, yeah, in the, in the fall. And well, spring when the...
People are cleaning fish in their.
Yeah.
Yeah, smell, if the smell to run in, they'll come in here, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Some years you never see a whale or a killer whale or anything in the whole bay.
Yeah, some years you never see them and some years I've seen orcas in the inlet all the time.
Coming hungry and eating sea otter.
I didn't, you know, I would have normally laughed about the humpback whale thing, except for this last fall, I was bringing a group of hunters around Samuel Point where I would never expect to see one. Right outside of Deep Bay, one breached between Deep Bay and Observation Island. And I was like, holy cow. My clients all saw it and they're like, this is the best trip ever. And I'm like, I've never seen a humpback in here before, but they do come into Orc Inlet, so.
When we were building Una Two, that second cruise ship berth, we had a mother and a juvenile who would come up and watch the pile driving. She'd roll up, put her eye out, look at the construction barge while we were vibrating pile.
We better not have been vibrating. She was that close.
Yeah. But I mean, she was just curious what was going on. Why was that big construction barge there? What we were doing floating things in?
The good thing is that if you look at the way that sound travels and the way that your breakwater and the opening is oriented, most of the sound, if it does make it outside, hits the island. It won't go any farther than that. Maybe a splinter would go, keep going out aways. But I, I really don't think that unless you have something hanging out between the harbor and, what's the name of the island?
Spike.
It shouldn't be a problem for those.
Do they use air curtains, Robin?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really, well, great question. They can surround piles in bubble curtains where they, almost like an aquarium bubbler thing on a large scale. They also have done where they drive piles within piles and get the water out of that, that outer pile. So it's sort of done in the dry and more quiet. There are sound intenuation type devices that you can do, which will reduce the, the sound at the source and reduce your, your radius of sound to a smaller distance. And that might be what happens here if, you know, we, we think that there's a potential for, you know, one random sea otter to keep hanging in, in the area. So this process, this endangered species and IHA process can take a while. And I, I will be honest with you. I was nervous when your crew came to me and said that they wanted to start building this fall because it made me like, it's a nine month operation to be able to get this done. So now we have some breathing room, I think. So that, it's good. It, it won't take more than nine months to, to get this approval. The other approval that's kind of come, come up recently with, with Sam and they've probably known about it, but I didn't, was your 408 compliance. That's just, if you're doing work on something that's been built by the Corps, then you have to go through this 408 compliance process. My side of that, I mean, they have to approve the design and you might have to do all kinds of different studies to make sure that you're not messing up what they've put in. But my part of it would be that they need to see that environmental assessment, that NEPA, done because that's another one of their federal actions. So we would just make it so that that MARAD environmental assessment also works for the Corps' 408 compliance. So they can just use it for their use. And then the same thing is, you know, you, you always need a Corps permit to do this work under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act and Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act. It's just a bunch of gobbledygook. What you need to know is that it's, it's for placing the piles and placing any fill. And they'll, we would ask for a permit from them. They would use that MARAD, again, that MARAD environmental assessment during their process. And then the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation has what they call a water quality certification. And that's only if we add in fill or doing any dredging as a part of the project. They don't have any involvement if we're just placing piles. I think what we've decided is that we would like to do permitting and the environmental assessment for the full Monti, whatever, you know, the biggest project is. So the upland components included and whatever we know about them would be included in this document so that, you know, you don't have to do it again later. Just take care of it now. And then later on, once you get the funding, you can design it and have, have the approval in place to be able to build up.
This is good for five years.
The permits are good for five years. The environmental assessment could be good for longer. It just depends on the, what MARAD says.
So I guess, I think I already know the answer, but I just want to ask. There's at least seven different duck species that winter in the harbor at different times of the winter, you know? Any of those going to be an issue or need any sort of additional permitting?
No, again, I, yeah, yeah, I would just talk with, they're migratory birds, so I would just talk with its Fish and Wildlife Service about what we need to do for them, but it shouldn't be a problem. I've never had it be a problem before.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure it was on the radar.
Yeah, that's good.
Do you need to know which ones they are? You could probably find out.
Do you, do you know what they are?
Yeah, so there's buffalo head.
Okay.
Harlequin. Surf scotter. Barrow's goldeneye. Are like the main ones that I see in the harbor.
All right. And then the heron.
Old squaw?
Yeah, old squab.
Or a longtailed duck, sorry.
Longtailed, yeah, longtailed duck.
We're not calling them old squaws anymore. Damn it.
And right outside the harbor, up by North Island and stuff, I've never seen them come in the harbor. Maybe they do though, common eider.
As long as they're not stellar or specter.
And then a substantial amount of mergansers, both red-breasted and common. So shouldn't be a problem. Just want to make sure that.
And the hooded, I've seen the hooded.
Because a duck lands in the harbor or something.
No.
Lots of mink and river otter in our harbor.
They're not protected.
Pesty little buggers. They're like, they're not protected, so.
Fed up their latrine sites.
Yes, they're smelly. You don't have to worry about them.
Get on your boat, they're really nasty.
Oh, they are.
As a matter of fact, I had some observers that were writing on their data sheets. They were writing about land otters. I said, take those off your data sheets. We don't care about them. They're not protected.
There's that one family that lives underneath the grid approach.
They're busy.
Oh, right. So we're, we're doing the preliminary planning and design. Mark's working on that with your crew. And I think you're going to have your, you're going to go into a more deep dive into the schedule here in a bit.
Yeah.
Okay. So what's important for, for my point of view is the endangered species consultation and the IHA application we're working on right now and we'd like to get them in by June. Working on that MARAD slash Corps EA, and we'd like to get that in by August. And so then the, that's 408 compliance. I forgot to change that.
Should be five or four.
Four, yep. The 408 compliance would happen then by the end of the year. And then the, the rest of the permitting would also, you know, occur by the end of the year. So, you know.
It's sort of convenient timing though with when the bulk of the funding shows up too, so.
Right. Yeah. So, you know, it could be that we have, you know, there's lots of flex in this schedule, but we, but we definitely, you know, want to have everything early enough so that we're not, you know... I've, I've been on jobs where I have a contractor sitting on site calling me saying, where's my permit? Where's my permit? We're not going to do that for this project.
I would if I could. And sort of the last little part of the discussion is we've been developing a schedule showing when the various activities need to take place. You probably can't read it in, in great detail, but it incorporates the permitting side of things. It talks about the various design phases we're going to be going through, the 35, 65, 95, and then issue for construction that we'll be doing. Incorporates some of the schedule for Robin's work, which is key to being able to go ahead with this. Talks about also the process of the procurement and fabrication, which are the long lead items. I would have told you last year that the procurement fabrication stuff would have been six to eight months. I am told by any number of suppliers and vendors these days, you're really talking 10 to 12 months on materials. It's just not available. People stop making things. And so we have longer time to order things. We need to get mill orders in for steel. We need to do the spiral weld steel. Needs to be all be galvanized. We've got to get a place at a fab that can do that for us. And we're going to be competing as we go through this with a lot of other projects that are being funded by the trillion dollar, trillion and a half dollar infrastructure money that's being put out there. We're fortunate that we're a little bit ahead of some of those other projects in terms of kind of where we are and the process and being able to move forward, having the funding in place that we've got. But you can see that those are the two long lead items right now in the schedule as far as I'm concerned. I think we could build this whole thing out. We could do the demo and rebuild the harbor in probably in about four and a half, five months. And it won't take long once we get rolling in a construction barge there. And then of course, you know, we also have the stuff at the end of any project you do. You've got to do all the closeout. We've got to get the warranties. We've got to do all those sort of things. Do the punch list on stuff that we want the contractor to repair or do something slightly different. That all gets, gets tied up in the end before we can close out the contract. What we're saying is we'll, we'll have boats in the harbor. We'll be able to get fishing boats out, but we still will be closing the contract. So. So that's roughly what that schedule says. I expect when we get the, uh, design bill proposals back. It will probably be about four more levels deep into the schedule. They'll have it broken down deeper than the two levels I've got broken down here. Just to give you an idea kind of where we are.
Is this very accurate, think, or is it gonna be like twenty twenty-six or something?
No, it's not gonna be twenty twenty-six.
Don't even talk like that, Max.
Part, part of our constraint is, uh, some of the funding has an end date on it as well, so we need to stay in that window. And, and also I don't know what the impact of inflation is gonna be, uh, on construction materials. We know what the impact of inflation is on diesel fuel and that's gonna jack up the cost of mobilization of getting the, getting the crane in there on a barge, you know. Trying to balance out wh- where we are on inflation versus the schedule, but I think this whole thing can easily be built in twenty-three, twenty-four winter.
They do in Suri. Six docks.
Yeah, in what, four days?
Four days.
Yeah.
Hook out, put back in. No electrical or water ran, but the entire float system floats back in.
Where was that?
They take piles?
So it was smaller, but still it was, even John Daly was amazed. It was really dumb.
They did, they did drop pile.
Yeah.
Brother's working on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Our, our project's somewhat bigger.
Right.
Do our piles have to go deeper than theirs too?
Well, that's why we're gonna do a geotechnical investigation to find out how deep we need to go and what size diameters we need on pile. I mean, you know, you could do this thing and say, hey, uh, all you contractors, give me a hundred fifty foot of pile, twelve inch, sixteen inch and twenty-four inch. And let them go at it. Uh, I think we will get better estimates, uh, better pricing. If we can tell them what we think the bottom actually looks like and how long pile need to be.
And that assessment's going on right now, right?
We're, we're under contract, uh, to get that done. We are squeezing that. We are waiting for a permit from the Corps.
Yeah.
Uh, before we can start. And we're talking about, you know, a fairly good size landing craft coming in to do the, the borings.
So they actually do bore down?
We're gonna bore down, find out what we really have at the bottom.
Like land penetrating.
We, we, we did a lot of, I'd say we, Curtis, Sam. We, we tried to look around and try to find what we had for information on the bottom of the harbor, uh, talked to ADOT. Uh, try to see what they had, uh, because they had been involved out here earlier. Uh, they couldn't find the records, so.
That's what I was wondering. There should have been studies done when we built the other harbors.
Yeah, there, there were, but we, we can't access those records for whatever reason.
I mean, do you don't have any bottom mapping or anything?
We have some bathymetry.
Okay. I was gonna say, I've got that if you need.
Yeah, no, we've got the bathymetry on, on, on the harbor and that was one of the things we talked about as a slide we could throw in here, but I you know, it, it's really not germane to what we're talking about. We've got enough depth to build what we want to do, except for the L float, which we'd have to dredge.
Yeah.
And if we want to build a bulkhead, we've got to do some dredge there.
Yeah.
Ran out of ground to get bedrock before they got, because they thought they had the goo. And no one's closest, so they're reluctant.
I, I think what we need to do here is, is, is get a, a map of what the, we think the bottom looks like. And then we need to have an allowance in there to find erratics, uh, cause they did find erratics when they did the North Harbor. Had to move some pile, uh, while that happened, so we will put a percentage in there and let the contractor know that they may have to move pile. And it's not a change order and it's not a cost to us.
So that's like you're going down, you hit a big boulder or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they did, they, I think they moved five pile on North Harbor when I talked to Bill Harris about it. Uh, that's what he suggested. And then I followed up, uh, with the folks at P and D who were involved with that and they suggested it was, it was five or six pile they had to move. So I'm assuming we're gonna find same lump of rocks.
I think they had to get special permit because they couldn't drive them as deep as they're supposed to.
Yeah.
At least that's what engineer was talking about. He said he's got three pile and he can't get deep enough.
I mean, you, you can always go through and drill. I mean, you know, contractor have the capability to do an under reaming drill. But, you know, that, that slows down process quite a bit, generates lo- noise over a longer term. It's a lot of noise.
Multiple.
So, uh, but I think if we put an allowance in there, uh, about moving pile, we will, we'll eliminate some of that, uh, extra cost. Other questions?
Um, yeah, I guess back to the funding sources. What were happening with EDA? They just fall off the face of the planet or?
Um, they, I, I would say presented what they're offering very differently than what they ultimately table offer. And they have the all sorts of other strings attached to their funding that would then emanate the other funding source of the project. Their timeline's also much slower. I, I think they're good projects.
Okay.
More of a standalone or something, maybe?
More like a bigger travel lift?
That would be a good one, yeah.
Or a trailer?
So I guess, uh, where do we go next here? Do you guys, do we wanna work on the drawings at, anymore or have you got enough input from us or what?
I took notes, I think. Sam took some notes. We'll get together and kind of work on that and we'll give some direction to R and M consult. And we'll come up some variations on these drawings that reflect some of the concerns that you have. Or figure out from a cost perspective, you know, where, what that does to us or for us. And, uh, and then we'll be able to, you know, consult again.
It does seem that, um, I guess trying to be sensitive to the complaints about the distance people have to walk, say if they're on the end eye and.
We get the moving escalators in there if need be.
Have a little dingy, little dingies. Harbor crew could run you out to your boat.
Sorry to be facetious. Yep, water taxi to raise money for the harbor.
Get some of those dondeleers from Venice.
But there's no bicycles allowed on the dock.
So what were you gonna say and you think maybe it would be more? I mean, you wanted to be considerate of their complaints.
Well, I'm it, it does, you know, I, I'm just trying to balance the seeming utility of having the drive down float also be the pedestrian walkway for that part of the float system. And the benefit of having a separate trestle and gangway.
We could put an add option in the RFP and get the design builders to come back and tell us pricing on splitting them. Putting them adjacent to each other.
I mean, and, and you, and you look at the North Harbor where we kind of have two trestles, but they they almost come out at the same spot, you know, it's kind, it's so, uh, but we don't really have. Do you have people complaining they're getting too many steps?
Oh yeah, all the time.
All the time. Yeah, and sometimes people complaining is part of what happens.
We had someone like a stall.
It's a balancing act, right?
We had someone like a stall four one to get closer. It's like they'd only get you twenty feet closer.
Yes, well, I feel for the harbor crew having to put up with, uh, the, the brunt of the, um, complaining.
Way from everybody.
So, one thing that was brought to me by a community member this last week. Uh, I was riding the, or maybe it was two weeks ago. I was riding the ferry back and he's a member of the urgency services team here. And he was saying how, just to, to make sure I, you know, told whoever it was on the project team that going any narrower would make their job harder, as far as the emergency services would bring in their four wheeler down and stuff, so. Wanted to.
It, it's certainly a consideration is, is being able to get people off.
Yeah, he said, right now it's really like really hard to turn around at the end of the docks and so. I passed it on now so I can have a clear conscience.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be one of the performance requirements.
Cupcake, yeah. I think.
Yeah, cupcakes are for.
I think cupcake needs to be.
It's kind of like a, a meal, alright?
You should ask Mike Hicks about how, how it.
Side by side.
You can't turn around the docks. It's, wait, it shouldn't be on. Yeah, fireboat.
I heard today that the fire department got a jet ski for quick response within the harbor. I was surprised. I hadn't heard about that.
No idea.
And they haven't told you about it, huh? Okay.
Doesn't seem like it'd be that hard to get a fireboat. One of those old coast guard boats NVE has, you could retrofit it pretty easily. They were auctioning them off last year.
Any other questions?
What's the plan for the three stage now that we're not funding it? Just, just do it out of the budget in the future? I just want to make sure it's still on the radar.
We do have a, we have a bunch of lumber that we knew we'd have left over from the last projects, but I think we can do a lot of it without spending.
Is there any way while we're doing all this permitting and have the pile driver here, cause it's gonna need a couple new face piles?
Yeah, the face piles are in rush.
Like, is there any way we could still just get a couple piles over there or something? Cause it's like falling apart.
We talked about that a little bit. Oh, we need to identify it and put it in the RFP. Cause I was gonna do the nationwide and we held off. We're gonna throw it in, but I think that was before we decided we were throwing in the salmon relief money into this project. But I'll identify that stuff. Cause Robin will need to know that for the permitting. I think it's like ten piles and they're they're fender piles. They, yeah, I don't know if it matters. They don't have to be driven as far, but.
I thought you had said, that, or said. I thought somehow we talked to somebody and they thought it wouldn't be.
I'll, I'll double check on it. I, I was pretty sure we, yeah, but I think it was before we switched the money over to here. We were holding off right away, so. I'll look into it some more and get back to on it, but yeah, we should do that.
And then we talked about, I don't know, one point last winter, we talked about that doing another ramp on the other side of that existing float between the three stage, doing another launch ramp. We talked about it last winter. Just want to keep that on the radar.
We talked about, but we worried about encroaching on the.
It was the plane thing was the big deal, right? That the wing would hit.
Well, if you put a, a dock in the middle with pilings between the two ramps, but we talked about over towards the three, I mean, not three stage. Um, grid, thank you, right? Or, or taking the third approach away?
No, I was thinking like between the existing three stage and the existing dock.
And that was where we were worried if we went out, the boats wouldn't be able to get into that last stage because the ramp would be there.
Yeah.
I thought it was more a plane thing. I.
And you'd have to put pilings into the, you know, because it's. May, maybe. It would be nice. The more launch capacity we have, the better. It's a huge problem.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I've always liked the idea in talking to, I haven't talked to everybody that flies a plane, but um, Dave Herbie, that, that it wasn't really that big of a deal for him. He can kind of come in at an angle or whatever.
Yeah, if it was just one out at the end.
Yeah, he didn't really think it was a problem, but, um.
I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost. You know, it's like keep it in a, as a, in the back of your mind as a project that.
It would be a, it would be a huge help.
I mean, we've had it on agendas before and enough, I mean. So.
If we're in there messing around, driving piling and fixing up the three stage dock.
As far as mo- and demo, but just, it makes the most sense to do it.
I was pretty sure we decided not to.
I think you decided not to and we never talked about it.
Started repairing those pilings along the three stage.
You're gonna block that. You're gonna block the three stage.
You're not.
The pilings to the three stage, that's what's needed.
The fender piles, yeah.
If, if you had a really big boat in at the three stage.
Which we, a lot of them, that's where they get pumped out. As he comes in, he would hit that ramp as it stuck up further than that last stage.
No, no, it doesn't have to stick out further. We're not talking about making the.
There's already boats parked on that side of that float.
We're not ma- we're talking about making the float any longer.
I know. The ramp is gonna go out beyond the first stage.
It'll just the same as the other one. There's actually stuff in the water higher than the launch ramp that you have to be careful of if you have a big boat.
Yeah, they're broken off.
Ask me how I know, but you, you do, uh, I've, I've repaired boats that have hit it and.
We also had a discussion about how the deep it was right there.
There's a bulkhead there that sticks out and so.
But the other ramp sticks out even further than that bulkhead.
But it's lower. It's under it.
And it's further. But anyways, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Pending agenda then, got it.
Pending agenda. But I, I, yeah, I, I do agree that it could increase the utility of that ramp. Even though it might lead to more upland congestion because now we have twice as many boats trying to use that.
That's why we did the.
Well, we have differences of opinion about congestion up there.
Well, it, it, it is.
Congestion because instead of having seven boats waiting, you'd have two boats launching at a time. You'd still have the same seven boats would be using that no matter what. And you'd be able to get through it in a much shorter time by having people launch simultaneously versus waiting on each other.
Remembering everyone that uses the north ramp back over here.
But, but you could attract, you, you could attract more. That's the argument. You could attract, you, you could attract more.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
I mean, if it does attract.
If you guys love her, put the dock in over there.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, three sections of it.
Just gotta wait till a twelve foot.
Oh my god, yeah. And when we get the whole dock in there so people can actually pull their boats out.
Well, thanks you guys. I appreciate your work on this. Thanks, uh, Robin, Mark, Sam. We have more word, I appreciate you guys. Uh, yeah, I think we've I, I think we've given, does anybody have anything else they want to add to this? We don't have any public here.
I just want to say thank you for Mark and Robin coming to town and then Sam and Curtis, uh, huge amount of heavy lifting here.
And we always like to beat up.
Sooner or later, they're gonna get back to doing all the other stuff without worrying about the harbor.
Max said twenty twenty-six.
You good? You adjourned?
Well, I've, I've got a question for Sam. How's Second Street coming along?
Have we adjourned?
Ahead of schedule.
Sweet. Is there any way to have them go a hundred feet down Lake Avenue and get all those poles? Or is that state?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Just right there, like right before.